This is my 18th county conference here. By the end of Tuesday night, I will have done one in every county in our district and two of the Baker County. I've been there a couple of times. So this is my 91st one in three years. We get out and about the district a lot. In fact, we'll be in seven counties in five days, 692 miles and 27 events by Tuesday night. I get my other new list when I get home, which includes bowling ball in Clifford, which is growing crack with it. But I'm delighted to be here today in Lakeview, what a beautiful day it is. I wish we'd driven through more snowpack coming over to build for Menford Climate, but it is, it is what it is. I'm welcome. Commissioner's here. Glad you're here. And you know, I read this story recently about a bonding in Lakeview. I had to read it twice to figure out what these kids were up to. But so I want to recognize the students from Lake County Library 18 Summer Reading Program, who we think earned this chapter in this book of world records, your stick law, which is pretty cool. Yeah, if you want. All right, and I've got some letters here. Rebecca, you're right here. So I have a letter congratulating you on that.
And this is what I give most.
Congratulations on that.
And Sarah, Sarah Bell was also here today.
Yeah, we're proud of her.
And she's Stacy Jones.
Stacy, congratulations.
Or here, the resident individuals who participated in this, but through spring break and then had family obligations, but so.
All right. Well, stay here, let's play. Is that worth it?
Okay, guys, give them a little boost.
I love the courage to do a lot of watching the video, too. I've not had a chance to do that, but I understand that you can watch it online and see the library. Obviously, you've got a strange way. But I saw the picture in the paper about all the way down. So thank you for being here today and congratulations on taking on this task and certainly any of the listeners, thank you for your leadership on this as well. Good luck. A lot to Jeff as well, Judge Nichols and Jeff Edman, I understand, the three principals as well. So anyway, it's kind of fun to see it come together and learn how to do that. There's probably a principle to be applying in physics somewhere at college. Let me give you a little update on some of the things we've been working on the last about three months now and some of the actually longer than that. The base of progress is last week, we joined the Department of Lake County and to part of history, I worked closely with Speaker of the House, John Boehner, since the end of the year when we didn't get school schools refunded. And he made a comment that by the first quarter, we get it. And indeed, on Thursday, we got Washington, we approved legislation in the House that included funding for our school schools, which is very important for Lake County. It's a total of about $2.6 million is what the initial estimate is, which for schools, county services is really critical. And the good news is it not only funds the current fiscal year for English starting October 1st into September 30, but we also have hope of the funding in there through next year as well. So we've got two years funded. You know, for some of our counties in Oregon, it's like a death if they don't get these funds. What we really need to do, though, is move beyond this and get forest legislation passed so we can get back in more active management of our forests, create really good jobs like we used to have, and be able to pay for the services as a result of the revenues from that are generated from actually harvesting timber. And so we're going to continue to work on that effort as well. You know, our forests are very much out of balance when it comes to the fire regimes, condition classes, and you all have heard me harp on this before, but for those in the Menford Fault areas who may be concerned about climate change at all, well, guess what? Forest fires are a huge contributor to the carbon and weather pollutants in the atmosphere. So if that's your concern, then help us on forest use. If you're in any of these airships we have, we're getting pretty sick and tired of getting smoked out or burned out all summer long. And they're really concerned about us, or we wrote about it yesterday, Menford matter. You know, it just sits there a hole and it's bad. We know what the Barry Point Fire did here 10 years ago. None of us wants to see that again. And if we were actively managing forests, we'd have less intense fires, certainly as fire. We know that, it's natural. But if you could get the fuel loads down and then actively manage a clean forest, green forests sequestered on a term, and actually it's a healthier environment for the rep. Continuing to be involved in the whole issue of all the traffic management, you know, different forests are different places certainly in terms of those rules. But as somebody who has grown up in this district, I know how important being able to access our public lands is for all of us for all kinds of reasons, whether it's under emission or high heat or, you know, just being on public lands. And so I reintroduced the legislation I put in last year. That would give more say to our governments in climate process and who would die, I would, in those quotes. It's really important we have a good network of roads out across our public lands providing fire, doing all the things we like to do for a great. And I just remain concerned that the local voice is not being heard or followed. And it just feels like we're getting shut out of our public land. So I reintroduced the Forest Accessful Communities Act, H.R. 1555, which now is in the House. And hopefully, the House Resources Committee will look into this and will get an opportunity to just get a period and perhaps move the bill, because I want to put us in front seat instead of the back seat when it comes to these decisions. We passed a couple of bills related to reining in, but I think it's a little out of control. EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, you know, they're working on these rules that would have said that stock ponds and irrigation ditches were somehow annihilated in waterways and subject to Clean Water Act limiting requirements. And it just doesn't make any sense. And so we were able to put a provision, a bill passed in the last Congress that prevents them from doing that. And we're still trying to work to pull back their waters to the U.S. rule. Now, there's legislation that was signed years ago that would have done this legislative regulation, but Congress affirmatively did not allow that to go forward. And yet, the agency is trying to do it on its own and courts are involved in its mess. And the last thing we need is a bigger EPA, more involved in our lives, and when these issues could relate to water request, which could be very, very bad. We've passed a couple of bills that are important in this area as well. One, we make sure that the science that's used in their rulemaking and decision making is made available to the public and online, which I don't advise it's not now, so you don't really know how they're coming up with their decisions. We also did some reforms to the Science and Advice Board that they use to make sure that it's more open and transparent and doesn't have the kind of conflicts that would lead you to not hold on to what they're doing. We also, last year, we got the fund of EPA by $2.2 billion. That's a 21% reduction in EPA funding. And they're back to a staffing level that they were at 1989. So we're trying to rein in, but I think it's been out of control, never growing federal agency. We all want clean water, clean air. I know the only way that does it, but what we don't need is an agency. It's completely out of control. And it's not just me saying that on these waters of the U.S. rules. The Small Business Administration of the Obama Administration put out a statement that they don't like these rules either and coming from the EPA. And they think it would be hard for it to small business. So you have one arm of the Obama Administration telling another arm to go there. And you've got Congress saying the same thing. Last week, we passed a budget in the House that actually balances each year. My party's been in control of the House, we passed a balanced budget in the House at least. And uniquely, this year, for the first time, probably in five or six years, maybe longer than that, the Senate now has passed a budget as well. It also balances the increase taxes, both balance. It takes a while, you can't do this thing overnight. That's the problem. It balances in, ours balances in less than 10 years. The Senate's about there. Now, in the House and the Senate, the opportunity to come together and work out the differences. About 2009, we'll have a budget in the House and the Senate, and then we'll go forward just pretty important work. We've got to get this budget and spend it under control. Right now, the average, for the 18 trillion we have, the average is about $56,9495 per person. So if we all had a podium today, that's a lot. Be about 56,500 per person. And so we've got work to do, get that deficit down so that these stick law builders have either futures or economy of the war as well. And we've done some work on helping veterans, improve quality access to care, and continue to work to solve some of the issues within the veteran's bureaucracy. We passed a bill to take away the bonuses that were given to VA, to the Veterans' Paris executives who weren't doing their job. And then we got votes for it. It makes no sense. 380,000 vacation bonuses to the top executives at the hospitals that were basically misleading veterans at Congress and not providing the care. And we did some other things. We created this Veterans Choice Program that can go more than 40 miles from a veterans' facility, healthcare facility, or it's more than 30 days waiting at this car. But they really messed up how they rolled this out, in my opinion. They, when we said 40 miles, we never thought they interpreted that to be as if a crow flies, 40 miles, which, you know, this kind of thing, on one side, they ran the canyons, probably a mile and a half across, but to get it to the other side. So we pushed back and they now have recognized maybe the 40 miles distance where you're meant, where you can actually drive. And so that would be helpful. There are some other issues related to how these things be rolled out. Fundamentally, I want to make sure our veterans' access to care as close to home as they can get and as soon as they need it. I mean, that's our goal. And so that's what we're trying to do here. We provided in this bill that passed last week, a fix for our physicians that treat Medicare patients. There's been a flawed formula in books in Washington since 1997 and how they pay. And every year, Congress comes in knowing it's flawed formula patches. And we spent about $170 billion over 17 years doing that. And it's all kind of pony pony accounting to begin with. If we didn't act, the physicians would have seen a 21% reduction in their payment for Medicare patients, which they can't pay. And so the Speaker made it clear, we are done with a short patch and we're going to fix it once and for all. So last week, we did that in the House. 392 members out of 433 who were there today voted for it, including me. And it gave us a little help, too, for home health care in rural areas. We got a payment for delivery of home health care in rural areas and ambulance services in rural and super rural. That's really our district, possible work to prepare. So we got some bonuses in there to put in some other help, too. So finally, I think we're going to take one of these issues that comes up every year for, it's a problem every year for healthcare clients, and take it off the table once and for all. And that would be, that would be a big setup. And take that up and then come back in the session after the Easter break that we're all on. So about two weeks, they'll be back and do that. So let me stop with that, because obviously a lot more I could get into and happy to. But thanks again to the library and everybody, all the teachers, everybody involved in this. And thanks to the young people who are here today for setting the world record. That's pretty darn impressive.
Yes.
Thank you. So what time am I? Yes?
So what did you have to do to fix the doctor name as far as offsets?
So there's a series of probably $78 billion worth of changes in waste rod abuse has been identified as part of that, changes in some of the programs that are out there, entitlement programs that we felt could be run more efficiently. I mean, I haven't mentioned the whole list, but it's a compilation of things to do that. And the thing about it is it costs us about as much to patch it right now as it does to fix it fully. And it's because of the goofiness of the formula, which dealt with looking at what, how healthcare costs go up provided by physicians to Medicare patients, just the overall cost. And then that's just linked to the economy in general. And so if the economy were doing well or not doing well, which is completely, by the way, unrelated to whether more seniors getting healthcare or not, ineffective this whole accounting, it made no sense. And so it was one of those things we just had to bite the bullet. The interesting part is just the way the formula happened to contort right now, we kind of laugh when we said it was on sale, because it's one of the lowest costs to get it off the books that we've seen. Still pretty expensive, but it was, it is low, like a half of what you've seen, just because of goofiness of the formula. Yeah?
What's your prediction about the Senate picking programs?
I think they'll be able to roll them. And it will occur to, yeah, they'll take it up and make it back. And part of the signal they sent us is they need to see the strong one out of the House, otherwise they might start playing with it. 392 House members voted for it. That's pretty strong. Part of it's special about some of this, and so I think it makes sense. Plus, it would extend for two years, the S-Chip program for children. I mean, there's a lot of good policy in there, too, that we're taking other things off the table moving forward.
Is this supported by the legislature?
Yes. Both the SRS funding, both the school schools funding, and this fix for SGR, the Sustainable Growth Rate, are both, the President issued what they call SAP, a statement of administration, and the administration position in favor. So both, Obama's on board, Pelosi made a word, is, reads on, well, I don't know if reads on the board, but the con is, there's still lightness of issues initially. I don't know where he is right now. But I think first, everybody in Congress wants to be done, you know, with this. That's just one of those things. We all know it makes no sense. And you're going to fix it, you're going to fund it. So I'm going to fix it once and for all. And by the way, part of it then puts in place a legal way to actually measure health outcomes, to measure efficiency of care, the kinds of markers you should be looking for when you're looking at healthcare outcomes, it's healthcare outcomes, it's costs, and that actually apply. And so we're working with the local community to design those so that we can do a better job. You know, in Oregon, we get especially punished in any of these, harder than a lot of places, because our care is delivered as about as efficiently as anywhere in the country and at less cost. So our real, our payment for Medicare recipients is one of the lowest per county person in the nation. Because when they started this whole process years ago, not the SGR, but Medicare, they kind of froze everybody in time. So if you were a high-cost provider, you know, a county out there, you could, like Dayton County gets twice the payment for Medicare physician or person that we do here. And so it's, so when you get punished for being inefficient, anytime you send it across the board, that's because we're already running it. There was a study done, it's probably half a dozen years or so ago now, that in every state ran as efficiently and affordably as Oregon does, Medicare would never run a deficit. Right now, it's going to go broke by 20, 30. So 15 years, absolutely some changes if it goes broke. Isn't that amazing that we're actually that good? Well, our provider, yeah.
Congress also is a part of that. It's my understanding that the school schools is also in that.
Correct.
Very important to figure out, kind of, if you're not a lot of time.
Yeah. Very, very important fact that $200 and some million dollars nationwide, Oregon gets about $100 million. So that, by the way, that's also why it's, it's harder and harder to get this funded, because people have figured out for like the recipient. Why is that? It's because we have all the forests that are doing a good work. We're not allowed to build that, so the loss is there significantly there. But there are, I have a colleague from Texas, Devin Brady, in Russia, not to be accurate, that was done, that was announced, just thrilled. I think his, like, school district gets $100,000 or something. And, you know, we're talking how many millions in the Lake County. It's great, but he's all bought in because they're based on their field trips and such. So, you know, if you do find hotspots around the country, I don't show them the whole spreadsheet here about what we get versus that.
Well, Greg, when those eastern states and Texas and so forth get complaining about funding for search security for school, I propose that we go into the land based stuff. That's what we should be doing.
Yeah. There's a lot we should be doing on these federal lands. Most states, I don't think there's a state east of Mississippi that has more than 9% or 10% of their land mass that's federal. And then those are parks or whatever, generally speaking. They don't understand both the size of our states and how much of our states are under federal, you know, control. And so it's, it's actually not too hard to sell, to pass it, once you find a way to pay for it, because you have to find something that'll pay for it. And that's what we ended up doing within the SGR. We scoured everything related to natural resources, which is where you're supposed to go get the money, and you're supposed to get it within the same time period you're spending it, and there was nothing, literally nothing we could buy. Because the only federal government could own a forest will lose money when they cut trees on it. You don't get any credit for increasing the harvest of federal forest lands from a bunch of tiers in Washington, because they say you'll lose money. I always thought we ramped up timber harvests, had to pay for it. By the way, that's how it works in private land, county land, state land. Only on federal land do they project to lose money. Yes?
I believe the bill in the Senate to extend SRS funding was for three years, and I think the one from the House went for two years, did you trust it?
Right.
Is this the consensus? Is it likely to be for two or three years, or how is that?
Well, here's the real difference. When the bank sends you a checkbook, it doesn't mean you have money in the bank, right? So what the Senate didn't send you a checkbook for three years, they don't have a way to pay for it. So we could have said eight years, except we don't have a way to pay for it. So unless they got paid for it for three years, they don't, and they've never said they do, they just were authorizing it. We actually paid it for two years, so this is fully paid for, funded, ready to go.
So they think there's an appropriations bill attached with their?
It's in a bill that funds it, yeah. It's, I guess technically it's an appropriation bill. It funds it. I don't actually call it for, it must be an appropriate one. So, yeah, so there is not the rising, we appropriate. And so that's what you really want us to know. Yeah, it's like the old Lucy, Lucille Ball show, you know, Lucy, she always thought she had money in the bank, so she had checks. Yeah.
So are you, your forest efforts toward the, toward the juniper and sage grouse?
So there are, there is work underway at both of those. We were in, we had 15, we did two things in the final appropriation bill at the end of last year. One, we got more money in for sage grouse restoration work, it's on the plan, I think it's about $15 million. Two, we put restrictive language in that said the agencies could not do any work leading up to a listing, to actually list and say, we're trying to buy ourselves some time. And so that, that runs out at the end of this fiscal year, which is September 30. And then we're going to try and renew that. Meanwhile, I know Cliff Vance, who's a state representative from Ontario, I don't know how far he's come, 30 years. Yeah. So he and I were together last Saturday up in Baker City, talking about his bill of legislation, I think that's $2 million a year for five years or something, I don't, I don't know, or yet to go into sage grouse and juniper. So we're sort of tackling it for both federal land and state lands, yeah. So we have to get active management out of there. Then how about the wild horse issue on the Indian's view? We have to deal with this wild horse. I mean, talk about destroy the range and the non-vehicle, and I'm still.
I have another question. We've heard kind of murmurs from the deal that maybe there might be some special funding because it's a sage grouse area, we have to do some.
That was a sage grouse. That was my thought.
Yeah.
It's funded.
Yeah, this is a growing priority, let me say, for me. I know we've got a couple of these other things off, we can focus on some of these issues, because we're going right into the appropriations process now. Once we get the budget that should be by April 15, then the appropriators will begin their work. And that's where we're lucky in that we have several Westerners kind of heading up, the key appropriations committees. I believe Mike Simpson from Idaho, he's a good friend, and it's so helpful on all of these issues, because he's got the Idaho, too. And we will be looking at wild horse issue, the sage grouse issue, all of these things in the appropriations process. And by the way, that's where you really get the agencies' attention, when you, when you round up my budget, you get their attention, when you get their checkbook, they have, yeah.
I'm very glad you're here, and right, so I'm glad to hear that you're, you could hardly not be aware. The baby's beauty law, but it is to the point that it's almost irreversible, there are so many horses. So I'm wondering, we've gone through all the agencies, natural resource agencies, and they've all been trying, but there's nothing they can do because there's this is what we hear, there's no place for the horses to go. And that's logical, there are so many horses. And as ranchers, we're not animal horses. So that's not the problem. The problem is they are totally, they're not going to be sage, they're not anything. So what I mean for you is, when you say you go with the appropriations, what are some options that you can do?
Well, there's a couple of things. This is where you can direct funding and put more funding into managing the horses, figure out how to house them somewhere. The whole thing is completely.
Well, they say they have the money, but they just can't find it in this world. Money's not the problem.
Well, I mean, the first time an agency.
I would never be.
Then it must be the will. Yeah. See, what you do is, when they're coming and begging for all their funding, that's when you really can cut to the heart of the matter, you know, what's really going on. And then direct them to it. In some cases, you go with whole funding until they do certain things. That always gets our attention. You know, I was so mad about how they were misbehaving over on Steeds, doing some things contrary to the law that I helped write. I told them, I'm just going to put a amendment, we're going to move that port of the Illinois headquarters office to burners until you get it right, you know, and they ought to be there anyway. We got a lot, we got a lot of, we got an open space here, we can have a state office, Lake view, we can have a, we can have a, you know. lately, we could have, we could have an, you know, a plebiscite district here or where they should be. They're, they've lost touch with her, and so not the local people, yeah, they, yeah, it's, it's sort of state on, uh, now we're, we're fortunate in that Steve Ellis is the number two guy in Washington. So he's actually what I called him and said, I'm gonna do all these various things to, uh, he and I are friends, and I said, you know, I don't usually get this spun up, what's happening on Steens is outrageous, and I'm not gonna stand for it. I mean, they weren't appointing the members of SMAC, uh, the Steve's Advisory Committee that did year, year gap, they can't function. And it was all wrong except for Washington, which is where a lot of this is wrong, because it's not here, it's global. But why is it, you have to follow your plan or you get penalized, but the agency doesn't have to follow their plan, and there's nothing that happens to them?
Does work on us.
Well, that's where we're trying to step in. How does that equate?
This is a lot of horses and, and, just that my granddaughter, the big one, was saying this, but what, are you going to provide for this?
Right. So the, and I think we've heard a lot of bands, uh, horses, a lot of.
There are.
Yeah, France, others, and, and, you, you know what happens, and you can imagine in the darkness, there are very few of us in districts like this, and a whole bunch jump out of the cities, and everything, every horse is black duty. You know, and they don't understand, and, and we're spending, what, what's the figure? Can you ever figure out, forty-seven million a year or something, just to feed the ones in the warehouse till they die?
Yeah, somewhere between thirty and forty thousand per horse for the lifetime of horse after.
Where is that?
Oh, it's, 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 it is, and they're just cows, big grounds or something, they have a couple of big places, they're nursing homes for horses till they die. And, and, yeah, they're, they're treated to mainly in home, but it, it's enormous part of the L M's budget. And, and what we need to do is get ahead of this and do some spade work, or, you know, somehow prevent, uh, this runaway population. I know there's some initiatives looking at that, how you can manage, uh, how rapidly they reproduce.
You can't be sure, plus.
No. There was sort of an outlet maybe on the Indian reservations, because they're a tribal government, and there was talk at one point that, that one of the tribes was looking at putting in a horse slaughter facility.
Yeah.
But I don't know whatever became of that.
Yeah, it's a contentious issue for them too.
Yeah. And we all love horses. We love dogs and cats, right?
Yes, it's a contentious issue.
It is.
It's like, it's a stray cat issue, please.
Yeah, the stray cat.
Because, you know, you have to, that's straight on stray cats, they're rather hot and cold, just like you have to, uh, all those stray horses, you know? I, I myself, I, I always find it so interesting, you know, when you say the grand mustang, but you know in Spanish what that means, it means astray, the lost. It always means astray.
Well, then, these are native horses, they were brought in, you know, so it's not.
Well, it points right back to the economy of the county, and it's very serious. I was looking at the degradation that due to the environment there.
The water, the waters.
And, and the ranchers are totally affected. I mean, where do they go, like, with thirty-two percent private land, you can't find other land to buy or even rent that's economical enough to carry on? And this is a natural resource-based county.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what, that's what our scholarship is, the day of, uh, came from cattle, all economic, from timber, the antipodes, cattle, uh, these all go back to natural resource ag-based returns to our county. And, uh, it was a tremendous trickle down event, effectively, they go out up there, there's machinery viewers, it's the schools, it's the veterinary, and the parks house, and Ed's.
Yeah.
It's huge.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's more than trickle down, it's the base underlying foundation.
Businesses closing down, that's too more, we don't need.
Right, absolutely. That's why we gotta get on top of it.
How about, for instance, when you, you're in your own land, is that, is it a concern here in other places?
Yes, uh, it just depends about where the horses are and where they're not managed with. I mean, really is that. But, but, you know, these basic issues are everywhere in our history, it's out in the story. So you've got, uh, you know, sage grouse all across, frankly, great basic, but certainly all across Southern part of Oregon. Wild horse population has been a problem for a long time, it's just gotten worse. And then, well, over the top of that, fires under rage. So now you take a lot of other agents off, or a lot that's off, and, and then couple that with, and it just doubles down until there's not, not much left.
So I'm not a wild horse expert, but I, I think what I remember is that one of the main problems is that you're either legislatively, legislatively or policy-wise preventing, preventing the limiting permanent SRS features. So do you think there's a political will change that?
I didn't know we were. March, March, that is actually a result of litigation from the United States.
But are we prohibited?
No.
Right.
They may, no.
I, I believe there is a.
Permanence is?
From permanent SRS.
Oh, permanent SRS.
Yes, yeah. And there's problems with the temporary measures about increased utility after the measure expires and not managed, so.
Wow.
That's regulation. Yeah. That's a, that's a case.
Yes, so you can't permanent SRS.
No, not currently, with, that is how, um, legislation hasn't spared, uh, regulations.
Or, yeah. So you go back over here.
So you can't do.
Apparently not.
And the tax.
Yeah.
So they have drugs. But it reaches a point where they use the drugs and they come off production, then they have the malady portion of injury with drugs out there. Wild horses, oh, wild horses, usually have, normally have their babies in the spring of the coast in the spring, I think, before babies come, had their coast in the spring, now they're bowing their around, they totally, they're, they have to do it every so many years. At what point, when we're putting all this management against, quote unquote, wild horses, do they become domestic horses?
They are domestic. But that's, that's the issue, they're domestic horses, it's straying. But, but, that's, I, that's the part that is so amazing, they're a domestic horse that's a stray. Nobody's.
We're all the same.
I'm saying that the legislative question, if you're, they're a domestic animal that's just not ground, pregnant, they're ground, irregularly, right? And, and, and that's a different thing than, you know, wild horse, you can't argue that there are some, right? You know, I, I guess that's the part that I, I can't understand.
Welcome to the world I have. There is a lot back there, if I had a, if I had a, because you, if these were dogs, if these were dogs running around the city, what, what if we protected the wild rats in the city? You know, we need, that's what we ought to.
Yeah.
That's what we ought to, you know, I mean, we ought to say New York City and Detroit or wherever else, always, those are, those are wild rats, we have to protect them. You can't, you can't, wait, you can't, you know, I mean, they're.
No, I, I think, I think that's a nice rhetorical way to speak.
A rage rat. Oh, I'm getting so much.
What's the next big issue that you tackle to make us accomplish something?
Oh, the next big issue we can tackle, we can accomplish something, well, we have the budget for each, too, that's big.
That's big.
That's a big one. Uh, we've got transportation funding we need to figure out, we're, we're in the process of doing the next six-year plan on transportation, that's a funding, how do you pay for it? Uh, there's always more demand for money, but with us, with more fuel-efficient vehicles and driving less, it's a, it's a significant issue. So that's one they're working on. Uh, there's continued evolving work on the B A issues, we can't let go of our veterans retrieval. Uh, I don't know specifically what bills are, are in the pipeline, uh, but that will continue to be a, a focus. Uh, our forestry issues, you know, we have a new chairman, both the House and Senate forestry, or committees have jurisdiction over forestry, they're both ramping up the staff and all, because of the big change in the Senate and then committee change in the House. Uh, so I hope to continue to work away on the forestry issues. Uh, yeah, I mean, those are, there's talk of tax reforms and refine the code and make this more competitive, and that's, that's a hard one, but there's, you know, it's what Paul Ryan's heading up here for.
And you should have that trade agreement.
There is a T P A authority for the president will be up, and a T P P, the Trans-Pacific Partnership Trade Agreement, which has not been normalized yet. Uh, but obviously, trade is a big issue for us on the West Coast and for a lot of agriculture. I mean, all you had to do is watch who got hurt during the shutdown of the West Coast or slowed down the West Coast on the ports. You know, we have onion growers, onion sitting in those shipping containers for two or three months, Christmas trees sitting on the docks way after the rest was, I mean, stuff that wouldn't come in, trade really does matter, we can benefit from it if it's a good agreement. So T P P and T P A are both, T P A, by the way, is a trade promotional authority, what it, all it says, is it says that whoever the president is, the administration don't negotiate a agreement, Congress has the right to vote up or down on a agreement, it cannot be negotiated agreement. And the concept behind that, and I think though Clinton had it, I think Bush had it, Obama's not had that, it's already has been grabbed by Congress, but is that it's pretty hard to negotiate a complex agreement with another country and agree it back to your legislative body and have us rewrite it. So we get a vote down, we don't have the ability to go ahead. I don't know how you never get an agreement with another country if they got to do that too, and we got, then why would you have negotiators if you just send your legislators an old doubt war? And so that's, that's what T P A is, 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 gives Congress a vote down on rewriting the order, yeah.
Cybersecurity and long internet, what do you do in the act?
Yeah, so I chair the subcommittee on Communications and Technology, we have jurisdiction over liquid satellites, and cell phones, and the internet through the Federal Communications Commission. I have some jurisdiction over cybersecurity that gets spread out as of its various technicals. Uh, it is the biggest threat to our nation right now, is the cyber threat. All you have to do is look at what happened to selfie pictures, you know, they thought they were protected and a lot of damage done. Um, former colleague of mine, Mike Rogers, who's the chair of the Intelligence Committee, used to say there are two types of companies in America, those that know they've breached and those that don't know they haven't breached. And he saw it, and he was at the presidential level, and just said, you know, this is the biggest threat in the face, because, you know, their, their instances were, uh, I think it was the U S Chamber of Commerce found out several years ago that the heating control in the wall was linked to an IP address in China. So smart grid networks that were developing for smarter energy usage, the Internet of Things, where your toaster talks to your refrigerator and talks to your food knows, you know, uh, all of that opens windows for bad operators to come in. You look at the internet theft of the credit cards and all, uh, Target, Old Depot, and other big retailers, and then Apple comes along with a new device that gets around all that, except we, I, that people who stole the credit card information use that, other new Apple devices. I, I did several hearings on this issue, and every panel over several weeks, every witness on every panel said, first, Congress, do know our, this move's so fast, if you lock us in and make us do certain things in certain ways, the bad guys know what we have to do, and meanwhile, we'll be locked in doing these things and disallocating our capital and our resources because we're required to by law. So what we really need to do is get to where there's more shared information with threats and how to code with them between the government and the private sector, not to go and fiddle around and look at what you're reading or anything like that, but just they can see, I'm getting a cyber center DHS has partner with us here, it's sort of like the original NASA mission control centers, I mean, they're literally on screen watching different attacks occur and trying to block them and notify agencies. Because the way the law is, they can't really notify the private sector very well, uh, and so we're trying to figure out how to advance that, so you can be better partners when they're coming at you, medical records. You think about this, uh, what if they were to get into the hospital's system and then just modify a few, uh, uh, medical records? Maybe what your blood pressure is or isn't, maybe in fact, you know, you, you begin, there, there was a public story about led to what happened in Iran, the nuclear system where that Stuxnet got in, and it told the computers one thing when actually the devices were doing something else. So it got in between the device itself, uh, its centrifuges, and then told the system they're actually spinning at a different speed or whatever else. They manipulated the data, which caused Iran a lot of problems. But this can happen, what if, what if you wiped out, uh, like, I will mention all the scenarios, and it's a long hunker down, but I want to be in Lake County when I pass this, we'll be safe here. And, and so there are records to get at cybersecurity and legislation that would allow us to do that better, uh, and, and still protect our privacy as Americans, but it's a, it's a difficult deal. Uh, and then we all just have to be careful, change passwords, we all have basic stuff on a regular basis.
What about the world, you're.
Oh, yeah, so there are a couple of things to help build out broadly in the world areas. Uh, one is wireless, uh, and spectrum, so the, you know, the devices in your pocket, you know, you've got your eyes on L T D here, so it's pretty fast, obviously this is connected right, uh, for, for R I V, about forty percent of, of internet traffic now is over mobile devices, which is interesting, as we kept the cord at all, I think it's forty percent now of data is over mobile devices. They connect in, though, they have to have a backhaul, which is probably fiber, uh, in the backbone of the internet, so you still have to have that last mile connection. So there, we're, we're trying to create more spectrum, which is what this operates on, like your radio station, and, you know, AM, our, ours is thirteen forty, two oh five five, or whatever, but, um, that spectrum, higher frequencies is what this operates on. So I passed legislation a few years ago to make more of it available by clearing off some federal agencies. By the way, the Congressional Budget Office told us it would not generate any money because it would never happen. Well, they are resonating. I put together, uh, a bipartisan work group on our committee that pulled in the Federal Communications Commission, the Department of Defense, National Telecommunication Information Agency, all the agencies involved, we met once a month, and we put pressure on them, and they finally reached a agreement that they could clear this spectrum, called A W S three. So it went to auction recently, I believe, in the last year, A T and T, Verizon, Dish, all these big companies bid on this spectrum. Do you know how much they bid? No. One billion dollars. Now, the people I go to that figure out how to pay for SRS, you know, can't find an offset account, they're the ones who told us this would never sell, and they gave us a zero score, and it, and it sold for forty-one, forty, uh, forty-one billion net, which fully funds the European Public Safety Network nationwide, fully funds a new enhanced I O N one system that will be constructed, pays for all that, and the remaining twenty-five billion goes into deficit reduction, which is pretty good. And we have more coming with television spectrum, and we just entered these legislation with bits of other federal spectrum. So wireless piece, um, is, is a huge area. We also free them some spectrum in the two-point-nine gig, five gig, it's way, way higher sort of radar frequencies, if you will, where it's probably ten, fifteen years out that we'll have some devices operating there, but it opens for incredible engineers and innovators that don't need to play in that space. And so, uh, I think there's a big, then on the ground, and in world areas, there are funding mechanisms and money available through universal. funding mechanisms and money available through universal service fund to build out into uncertain and underserved areas and actually lay the fiber. And so there are federal programs through the Department of Agriculture, the RUS, and through, uh, the FCC in what's called CAF funding, where companies can get grants or loans and build out in underserved areas. So it's sort of a multi-point effort to try and get broadband into our schools, into our, you know, hospitals. So you never tell them that, so there's a lot of pressure on these.
Yeah, great. We talked about it a little bit, we started your presentation talking about PDA. Just a reminder, I guess, in talking about funding cooperatives, you know, I still would like to think that if you address the biggest problem, the wood smoke problem, you know, Lakeview, Plano Falls.
Yes, sure.
Salt Lake City, voicing other places by, by including another national occurrence, which is this, uh, this really strong emergency facility here.
Right.
You know, uh, we're already excluded from the airport standards, uh, volcanoes, dust storms, and, and forest fires. Seems like any strong weather, which means cold, high pressure, the weather is one of those, eliminating those, trying to manage that worst case. I actually told me the hospital in, in some of these communities and therefore try like the other volcano, pretty much impossible controls. We really, I mean, looking at trying to, you know, I, I, Lakeview, Lake County, my, all of us are doing all we can to manage the air quality and areas that are most practical. But when you start to try to throw money at the extreme conditions, it becomes, your cost becomes prohibitive, success is unlikely. So what's, can't figure that?
Yeah. It's, uh, some of the stuff is never, it makes no sense. But when you finish with the wild horses, you know, I got a prescription there, you know, this came in, this came out, I thought, so let's worry, bring yours rats to Heart Mountain or the baby's use, and we'll take our horses to Central Park.
A trade, it's a trade.
You mentioned a trade, local rats. Right, wait, you're going to suggest that.
I have one question. Um, sir, it was kind of a veil for rent, sort of that, uh, very traditional way, it's brutal to test, uh, but maybe, I'm, I'm a designated national organization, something like that. Can, the law will stretch, will you have to care?
Um, as we witnessed in the last year or so of the Republican administration, presidents have a way of discovering every little piece of authority and this base of authority creates a whole lot. But, um, and the Antiquities Act gives the president, why is I able to, as we tragic, to, to, to our monuments where the underlying law will never establish a rule. And that's what led, by the way, to our legislation on Steen's, is because he was going to make a monument, I worked with the ranchers, and they wanted to do that, they wanted to try to write a bill, we could build a bill, he don't like it, and they went legislative route, and it was rough. And so about, we went ahead and declared a building, such a mess, I had to come back several years later and work with the cattle in their way, actually, and put some of it in the mowers, take some of it out, you know, because they don't do the work, you need to do groundwork for it. So absolutely, it's an issue, a live issue right now, you know, why he can, because, uh, on, and other groups would like to clarify the whole thing, or are a part of it, a wilderness, or, or a monument. He can't clarify the wilderness, because of the monument. Uh, so I've got ranchers there talking to me about, we better legislate something here, you know, before he does it. Just not, we don't, we do any of this. But I would take any, any hint of that real. And Congress says, you have to pass a lot on to do it. And as long as he's there, he's actually signed a lot on to do what he just did.
How's your administration leave, you then do?
Yeah, you might be able to. You'd have to get sixty votes in the Senate, you'd have to present, sign a pass in the House. So it's hard, it's hard to do that once it's in. A lot easier, and you know he's already worn this second pen, I gotta follow him. Yes, sir.
I have a good little politics in the program.
All right.
Partisan primary election, illegal and heavy, and there's sense of limitation and meet the two-party system. And they currently violate at least four sections of the Oregon competition, and then it's one of fourteen of the US competition. And you're a partisan primary, you cannot vote across, uh, all your lines.
Right.
Makes, it's illegal. How, how can it be illegal there, and then when we get down to the primary, to the general election, you vote your way you want to?
Well, I, I'm not a lawyer, uh, well, that usually gets a little bit of applause. I, I'd be, I, I, first of all, it's state law, so I'll, I'll go there. And second, I think the word, if somebody would have taken it to the courts and have it overturned. My understanding of how it works at a state level is that, uh, the, the legislature can legislate on this matter, or I think in Oregon, it's left up to the decisions of the parties themselves, how they think they're not the ease. And, and, and I know Republican Party has gone back and forth a couple of times, allowing independent voters and affiliated to vote in Republican primary. Uh, some states, it's wide open. Some states, there's no party registration at all. Uh, you just vote Democrat, Republican, or whatever. Some states, it's the top two vote-getters go forward regardless of party. Uh, so it really is up to the states and in some states, up to the parties. But I've never seen a rule illegal.
Yeah, well, uh, then Secretary of State Kate Brown, she said, oh, well, uh, I'm here to enforce the Oregon statute, and that's all I'm going to do because of, you know, the Constitution says. And so it's, she says, it has to be a duty, like you said, well, if somebody needs to do it, and if they have a war or two, they don't have the means to do it, and I would appreciate it. At least, on the federal level, uh, in two thousand twelve, at least for, uh, the primaries there, uh, you had half a dozen more Republicans running against Obama, and half of the voters didn't have a say, so who in the hell would vote in the, in the general election?
Well, again, it gets back to the states.
Well...
They have jurisdiction over elections under the Constitution, federal constitution.
Some of the, you know, the, the, violates the Constitution, but they don't give a damn.
Well, they should. Uh, and I take it, every year, every two years, that whole event, and, uh, I, I tell you, I don't want our elections to be dictated out of Washington, because I don't see any good outcome out of giving Washington more power over our voting process.
Should be dictated out of state, either everybody, if somebody is running for the laws, every voter should be allowed to vote for that particular person, if they would so like.
Well, you, it's a matter of state law, somebody could, uh, put an initiative on the ballot to change it. Uh, that's, that's possible.
Well, like you were saying, state law, Dr. Kate Brown says, well, that's not, I'm going to do anything, I didn't say to the courts.
Yeah. I, I would confess, my preference is each party shouldn't be able to pick their own nominee. The member fed party should be able to pick their nominees, as opposed to having Republicans weigh in deciding who the Democrat nominee is or vice versa.
But then, then why would they want us to vote for them in the, in the general election?
Well, it sets up the competition without parties.
Well, not, not about you, if you're running in this, if you want the Democrats, we'll produce a general election.
Yeah.
Why don't you vote for the local people?
Well, because I think if the parties are choosing who they want to be for...
They have it, the party directs the, 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 so they're putting it in.
Don't have us answer that. Got a little disagreeing between that. Yeah. But thanks for your service, the world war thing, we do appreciate that.
Are we, is, is the Congress going to be able to get their immigration plan?
It's pretty hard. Um, when the president issued his executive order, it really poisoned the well. I still believe you have to get control of orders, because until you do that, you can't control these companies going illegally, if they just go past it. So you really need to have management for the first, I, I can't have complete control of the management of orders, the best of our ability. And then, I, I think, having grown up on cherry orchard fruit, we've got to have this guest worker piece figured out for, especially agriculture and private industry sector, we go down the next to work for us, we fill out the, uh, I hear for sheep growers, I hear cherry growers, I hear onion processors, I hear, you know, and high-tech in other places. So we need to be able to satisfy our work needs. And, you know, there's much stuff we need to go do. Um, but you got to be able to build consensus around it. And I have the, the president has pulled the pin on their grenade through right to middle area with his illegal, uh, executive order on that. And it's, we're suing over that. Because I think if you violate the law of the Constitution, it's pretty hard to have a fair negotiation if somebody's willing to just pull the pin and throw the grenade through.
I mean, is there a chance to do pieces of it, like making revised visa programs so that there's a place to follow, so people return?
And that's, that's why I think there is an opportunity, and Department of Homeland Security Committee, in the right from call, is a federal prosecutor from Texas on work. He's got legislation built with some additional border security elements. The Judiciary Committee is working on building similar on some things under their jurisdiction. The visa program is, is real bad. Forty percent of the people who are here illegally overstay their visas. There are forty or fifty thousand Irish who came and just kind of like forgot to go back. We all think it's just Mexico, oh, it's not, it's, and we don't have a good visa program. And, and then for those who legally want to immigrate here, is standing line for ten or fifteen years, you know, so I mean, the whole thing's just kind of, we deal with immigration cases all the time with people, and, you know, it's, you know, and I think it's important that those who are following the law don't get jumped in line by those who haven't been following the law. It's like how we, how we manage this.
Oh, okay. The fairness, it should be fairness.
I think we got time for one more. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. You mentioned the TPP.
Yeah.
The next thing to have a, a large impact, and I know it's still being negotiated, that that's important.
Right.
I just wanted to hear your views on that, and anything to support or help with that in the House.
You know, I, I generally supported the trade agreements because I think they're very important to our economy, and the world trade port is on, and we're either cut out, and other countries fill those markets as they get preferential treatment between themselves, and then our producers or manufacturers get cut out of those sales. And I don't want to see that happen. And I haven't seen what the administration's negotiating on TPP, they're getting close. I think they're in Singapore or something, that's the right appreciation. Uh, and so I want, I want to see what the agreement is, correct way to know. But I, I think, you know, we, I mean, obviously, in our industry, we, we raise enormous amount of lead, uh, in the North Part, we're not needing all that. Uh, and we certainly saw the impact of the trade system, closed down the port, slowed down. And, and so I think, you know, to be honest with you, this, this trade piece is really important. But we have to get fair trade, so we're not dismanaging ourselves. And often Ag has been sort of in the backseat in some of these agreements that pass, it's got to happen. But it's a global economy. By the way, our biggest trading partners are Canada and Mexico. And a lot of Congress goes back and forth for, you know, a lot of products are built, partially here, a motor shipped to Canada, they add some, a lot comes back across, we do some, I mean, you can go back and forth several times. Same with meat, you know, maybe pork here, bread here, it's fed there, comes back finished here, and there's all this cross-court trade that goes on, it's really important to our economy, so. Well, thank you all for coming out. Appreciate it. It's been a season. I've got a few more things I wanted to do list. Anyway, have a great day.